All right, Mayor Levy, we are ready to go. We're gonna start recording. Ready? Recording now, Mayor Levy.
Okay, sounds good. We will start with roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Levy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Keys?
Here.
Councilmember LeBar?
Here.
Councilmember Nakurado?
Here.
Councilmember Stunier is absent. Councilmember Sawyer has resigned.
Thank you, Suresh. Okay, we will... We will move on. First thing on the agenda, I think, is for me to make some comments.
Pledge of allegiance, maybe?
I'm sorry. I just saw the flag now. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance if you all join. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
America, we love you.
Great. Thanks very much. Those that... those of you that know me, know how difficult this this will be, but I'm gonna do my very best to keep the sense about me. After all, this meeting's certainly not about me. Normally, we would have lots of people in the room celebrating the outgoing council people, mayor, and a general celebration of the last terms for those people that have served our community so well. Today, I I believe I believe that everybody will agree that there is very little, if any, normalcy in any of our lives. So for that reason, we're gonna go down a little bit different path, hopefully someday soon. We will all pray for that, that we can all get together and celebrate the work that's been done, celebrate Woodland Park, celebrate each other. In the meantime, I'll move forward and I wanna start with our new city council and mayor and talk about just a couple of things that that I that I struggled that I struggled to accomplish these last couple of years and maybe some advice on how how this new council can do a better job. Clearly, and it shows by the people sitting at the dais tonight. We had seven people on the dais two years ago when everybody was sworn in. Only five of those are with us tonight. You know what? There is something seriously wrong with that picture. So I think we all know where the issue lies and the inability to respect each other to work collegi... collegiately with each other has somehow passed this group by. And as the guy that sits in this seat, you know, the the response lies with me, not all with me, but with all of us. And so really enough said about that. I think everybody in the room, everybody listening, is probably well aware of some of the personal issues we have, some of the divisiveness that has happened over the last couple of years in particular, and sees that our group our group just I wouldn't say failed, but our group didn't accomplish as much as certainly I expected. And so we put that behind us and the charge for the seven new council members or the new council, including our mayor, is to you know, before before you do anything else, you need you need to find a way to remedy some personalities from here. And even the election, unfortunately, I see some things that disturb me and and make me believe that we got a chance of going down the wrong road again. I think I can remember when I was picked out of a hat, if you will, to be mayor. One thing I said to anyone that would listen was that this is a great time. This is a great time to be mayor of Woodland Park. Year 2014, clearly out of the recession. Things are going well for the entire community. And, right, how far can we take this thing? And always said that, and talked to people, and those that I talked to said, you know, Woodland Park is a great place, great place to live. And and my approach was you know, is is Woodland Park is Woodland Park gonna be a great place to live 10 years from now? Well, we're six years into that, and we certainly had our ups and downs, but I think if you spoke to at least 95% of the people in our community, they would express their love for Woodland Park and our general community, county, region, and the opportunity to live in in our great country. So that said, I think today, even though we face we face some obstacles that we've never faced in our country's history and our world's history to this extent, it provides a unique opportunity for the leaders in our entire country, but specifically in Woodland Park to do everything we can to help our citizens, to help our businesses, and everything that goes along with that. And I know I know you'll all agree, but I hope you also know that you won't accomplish what you set out to do unless you find a way to work together. Sometimes I have conversations with people that say, you know, I wasn't right on that, or or I wasn't right on this. You know, we all like to be right. One thing that we didn't do very well, and again, this starts with me and and everybody else is included, but the communication level gets to a point where where, jeez, nobody even wants to come to a meeting. Everybody's dying to get out. And we kind of lose sight of what we've what we've been elected to do and specifically represent our constituents. I'm not sure that we did that as well as we could. I don't know if any group has ever done it as well as they could. But as I look at this council, I see a lot of strong personalities. I see people that want what's absolutely what's best for Woodland Park. And so sometimes sometimes you just have to swallow your tongue, swallow your pride and figure out what's best for all of us. That means putting egos aside. That means putting politics aside. That means that everybody doesn't lead like I do, but I think you all agree and today's today's a great indication. I've always led from my heart. I've always wanted what's what's best for Woodland Park. And the Levis and the friends of the Levis never, ever came into play for any decision that I was a part of. And at the end of the day, I leave from my heart because because I want what's best what's best for Woodland Park and all those that that live here. That's my challenge. Even though I'm stepping down and I didn't provide a great example of that, I'm not going anywhere. I'd be willing to help anytime. But it's now up to you all to take us to the next level. And I think everybody understands exactly what I'm talking about. I'm gonna move on to to the people that that usually sit on my left. And I remember the day that my name was picked out of the hat and after everybody left, I was whisked upstairs by our city manager, David Butterey. And you know, he made it. He made it very clear that the staff, if you let them do their job under the guidance of the city manager with leadership from city council, then they're gonna make you look really, really good. And so I gotta thank everyone that's there tonight and all of the staff that that myself and all of us have been so fortunate to work with. I kind of had, shame on me, I kind of had that opinion of city workers in a small regard like a lot of other people do, like orange coats and leaning on shovels. And you know, shame on me and shame on the rest of you because I know now that the strength of Woodland Park lives with our staff on an everyday basis. They provide what's needed to operate this city more times than not flawlessly with Ishbein, no different than any other municipality or business. So I'm gonna start by thanking a few people individually without going into detail that have worked with me not on a daily basis, because that wasn't that wasn't the way I operated, but kind of was there for me and I hope to be there for them whenever whenever they needed anything, whenever I needed anything, and really let them let them do their job. One of our goals two years ago when I got elected was to hire the best city manager that we could possibly find. And we had, I think, about 100 applications, difficult process. At the end of the day, we named Darren Tangeman our city manager. I think it's been a great decision. And Darren and I have talked about this at length. You know, nobody's nobody's perfect. Everybody everybody can use help and advice from the outside and I think building a team not only with your staff but with everybody that you work with or a stronger team, I should say, should be paramount for the entire staff. And how you do that is up to you. Obviously, you have different personalities and different way of doing things, but my approach in these kind of situations, at least with my staff, and I've had some success over over about 30 years. My management style is pretty simple, and I learned it when I expanded and bought more than one restaurant and then realized to myself that there's no way I'm gonna be able to be in two places at once. And so what's the best way to manage? And for me, I think one of the things I do best is you know, is hire people. The people business, my entire life, serving people, specifically coaching kids. But I found right away that that if you give your staff if you give your staff ownership, they will appreciate you more than you can imagine. And they'll do a better job than even they thought they would do. And it's hard sometimes to stay out of the way. But I learned it over time. And then there can be issues and you have to make changes and everything that goes along with it. But the idea of letting your staff take ownership until they prove that they're not able to is my approach to doing business. It's worked well for me. I know there's many other ways to manage stuff. But I just, I put that on the table from a guy that's experienced it, has had tons of great feedback in terms of my management style and how I do things on a day-to-day basis. And I think at least it would behoove behoove all of you to think about that path. Not saying it's the only path, obviously. But what's better than when you see your whole staff working together, right, with a smile on their face and enjoying coming to work? When I talk to kids, more times than not, I ask this question. And it is sad, and it's the nature of our society. How many of you in this room? If you know people that are not happy with their jobs, raise your hand. If they're miserable in their jobs, raise your hand. And more times than not, about 80% of the hands go up. Well, one thing I really I really pride myself in, and again, it's the nature of my personality and kind of the need to be liked and those kinds of things, but bottom, I'm still a bottom-line guy because I've got a family to support. I always try to give back as much as I can to our community, to just like the rest of you. And if I don't get full support from my staff, then that does not become a reality. So certainly not pointing a finger at you, Darren. I've loved working with you. You know, you've taught me a lot of ways of being a green ray and your background and the knowledge that you have, to me, is just, is is amazing. And you, along with many others in the room right now, and those not in the room right now have you know, have helped me be a better person. So thank you for that. Suzanne, we're both so damn emotional. I don't know. I don't know how I'm gonna manage this. And probably just leave it at this because we have tons of time to talk and commiserate and and drink and be happy. You know, you're just you're just an outstanding individual. And the time and effort that you've given to help lead our city and make Woodland Park a better place to live will never be lost with me and and certainly will never be lost with many others in the community. We all we all owe you a big we just all owe you a debt of gratitude. And you two have led the way, not only as a city clerk, assistant city clerk, working for the PD. You just always have a way of you just have a way of of having a smile on your face through thick and thin and always, always doing the right thing. So God bless you, your parents, even though I've never met them. They must be amazing. One more that I need to to point out right now, especially right now, is our chief of police and our first responders, Miles, the the work you've done as a, honestly, a young captain, has has really surprised me. I didn't know you very well when you got appointed as captain and Captain and. Again, um. Our city manager made the. Made the right choice in. In his infinite wisdom. You wouldn't have been the guy that I would have picked. But. You know. A lot of people. A lot of people, uh, wouldn't have. Wouldn't have, uh. Pick me for mayor either. And so I've told you. On any number of occasions. How much. That I. And the entire community. Appreciate all that you do. In making our. Community safe, which is. First and foremost in all of our minds. And. I hope you're with us for. For a long time and. Continue to. To lead your guys and your team. And you really do have a team. You may be a great resource. And maybe not for others, but. Your team, uh, has gone above and beyond. So many times. Through these, uh. Last six years, it's just, um. It's hard to explain. So Miles and your whole staff, I, uh. I thank you very, very much. Uh, before I finish, I. When talking to council, I. Or everybody in the room, really. Our volunteers, our staff. Kind of starts with council. You know, I, uh. I thank you from, uh, the bottom of my heart. And on behalf of. Of the entire community. And. No sense to dwell on. On the past, I don't look back, I'm a. I'm a, uh. I'm a front windshield guy, not a. Not a rear windshield guy. We can learn from our mistakes. And. And move forward and. I'm always trying to. Get better in my life. Sometimes with some success. And sometimes. Not so much, so. Everyone that contributes. To the well-being of. Our community. Um, I have nothing but. Thanks for you. And. Clearly, we always. Didn't agree. Um, but, uh. It's not always the bottom line, it's. It's kind of what our mom. Told us. Everyone's thinking the same thing, right? It's not what you do. It's how you do it. Well. I'd be remiss if I. Didn't think. The most important people. In my life. And I should have done this first, but. I was afraid I couldn't manage. Most people know I've been. Struggling a bit with my health for the last. Four or five months. And I can. I can honestly say that. That I just. I just wouldn't be here today. Without my family. Paula, for. Almost thirty-one years being together. You know how much I love you. You've been. An absolute saint in. In trying to. Trying to help me get better. Even though I've, uh. Provided some pushback along the way. Because right guys always know. But. You've raised. You've raised three. Three great children. We've raised three great children. And I always say that. And most people agree with me, other than my mother. Um, that. All. All my boys, all your boys. Are. Are better. Than me, for sure. So it's, uh. It's a proud day. When. When. When you can give thanks. In that regard. To Max and Sam. Hello. I, uh. Hate to use this old term from. The best friend that passed, but. And. The best friend, not just for me, but our entire family. Coach dispense of, but. You know who loves you. And, uh. Keep up the hard work. Because I wouldn't be here today. Um, without working hard. Throughout my life, I think it's the. I think it's the key to success and. And I'm, I'm proud to say that. The three of you have, have taken a page. Out of my book and out of your mom's book. And working hard and. Doing the best you can and. At a young age of. Twenty-five and twenty-one and eighteen. You've all experienced. A. Tremendous amount of. Success. Couldn't be more proud. My only parting comment is. Is this. I never thought I'd be mayor of. Of my own house, much less. The city of Woodland Park and. When my friends found out from high school and college that I was elected mayor. Um, it almost. It was, it was almost laughable because of the way that. I grew up, I wasn't always on the. Straight and narrow. I was one of those late bloomers. But when I married Paula. You know, and we had kids, I, I figured it out. And, um. I think that's where. The growth in my life really started, which has only been. You know, twenty-six years or so. Twenty-seven years, I'm not exactly sure. But. The opportunity to be mayor. You've heard me say it before. Has been. Has been the greatest honor. In my life. And I just want to. I just want to thank you all. For your support these last six years. I look forward to the day we all get together for. A real celebration. And. I think I'll turn this. Meeting over to. Darren Tang, uh, excuse me, to. Darwin, who. Has a couple of words and. I'm sure if anybody else in the room wants to. Speak up, this would be the time, if not. You can wait until we get together. Next. Dark.
Yeah, I just, um, I, I'm, I, I don't know how to follow. Um, Mayor Levy's remarks, so I won't try, I'll just simply say. It's been an honor to serve with the. Current council and, uh, the complete council, including. Noel and Paul for the last several months. Um. And I want to wish the new council. All the best of luck and congratulations on your, um. Victories. All the best to all of you and, uh. You probably haven't seen the last of me. Thank you very much. And, uh, thank you to the city staff for getting me up to speed in a real hurry. Uh, six months ago. Um, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dark.
Okay, if no one else has any.
If I'm. Here saying I didn't thank her, so thanks to my wife.
Mayor, uh, we've got some other remarks coming in a little bit here.
Uh, Val, I'll let you manage from here on out.
Thank you, sir. Uh, it's been a pleasure. Um, I'll have a few more remarks here in a couple of minutes. Thank you, we're on, uh. Item three D, I believe, Suzanne.
Suzanne, we can't hear you.
I didn't say anything.
Oh, good, thank you.
Okay. Val, will you please raise your right hand with me? And then I'll have you repeat after me. I Val Carr.
I Val Carr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
The Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
And I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duties of office of the mayor.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Mayor Carr.
Thank you.
The next, um, person I would like to swear in is Mr. Path. Raise your right hand, thank you, sir. Repeat after me. I Jim Path.
I Jim Path.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
The Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
The city of Woodland Park.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of council member.
The office of council member.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, council member Path. Next, I would like Rusty Neal, please to raise your right hand. To see Rusty. Okay, Rusty, please repeat after me. I Rusty Neal.
I Rusty Neal.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
The Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the. Sorry, excuse me, the duties of the office of council member.
The duties of the office of council member.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, council member Neal.
Thank you.
Now I would like, um, Robert Zuluaga. To raise your right hand, thank you. Repeat after me, sir. I Robert Zuluaga.
I Robert Zuluaga.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
The Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of council members.
Of the office of council member.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Congratulations, council member Zuluaga.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Um, I'm going to, uh, remind, uh, all the council members that. We want to bring up the chat and then down at the two. Change the two to assistant city manager. Uh, Suzanne Leclerc, and then we will, uh, comply with all the open meetings, uh. Requirements, if we have a private chat only for the duration of the meeting with, uh, Suzanne. Thank you very much. I want to thank Darwin Nakarado for stepping up to volunteer for city council for the past several months. Thank you, Darwin. I want to congratulate Mayor Levy on his return to concentrate on the productive business and family life he has built for himself and his family. His leadership as an ambassador for Woodland Park is unsurpassed. And a model for anybody who attempts to follow in his footsteps. I've been happy personally to get to know Neal and Paula. I hope to see them often in the coming years where we see the delightful smiles and warmth. Neal and Paula always project in our community. We look forward to a celebration post-COVID. For all the outgoing mayor and council. So I will shorten my remarks at this point and have more to say and praise Mayor Levy at that time. Thank you, Mayor Levy. Uh, normally at this point, we'd all shuffle chairs, uh, and new council would move in, but, uh, we're not doing that today, so. We're going to move on to the next. Uh, item on the agenda, which is appointment of mayor pro tem. And I want to, uh, make a motion to. Put the two candidates who are interested in this, uh, Hillary Labarre and Kelly Case up for nomination. Do I have a second?
I'd like to nominate, uh, Hillary Labarre.
We'll, we'll second it, Val.
Thank you. Kelly and Hillary, I'll let, uh, Kelly go first. I'd like you guys to give thirty seconds or so to pitch to the rest of council, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Thank you, Val. Um, I'd just like to thank you for the nomination, Val. I, I'm honored. Um, I did, uh, reach out to you and tell you of my interest in serving as mayor pro tem. Um, last, last election, I remember, Val. And I'm sure you will too, and Hillary, that, um. We, we, um. Talked about the next highest vote getter and. And you were, uh, the opponent to, or the other candidate, I should say, for. Uh, mayor in that election. And, um. The. I would just mimic what we said last time. And I would be honored to serve as mayor pro tem. I've, I have quite a long tenure with the city and. Um, would be honored. Um, I don't think I'm any more qualified than Hillary. We are the two, um, other than Mr. Carr, Mayor Carr, um. That have been on the council and, and are continuing forward. But as I said, I'm, I'm the other candidate that's still seated on the council for mayor. And, uh, I would be honored to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Hillary, have some. Thank you, Kelly. Hillary, have some remarks, please.
Yeah, I'm happy that you nominated both of us and gave us both an opportunity to speak. And I am just happy to be able to help out if I can and perhaps be that go-between and consensus builder that we've all been looking for and working towards on council. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Hillary, well put.
So I would remind everybody that we're going to take a vote, but we're going to do it via our chat. So down at the chat, and it says to Assistant City Manager Suzanne Leclerc, put that privately, and then register your vote and send it off to Suzanne, please. Once she gets all the votes from all the council members, she will read the votes off in the public record.
Okay.
Mine.
You're on mute?
I will.
You're on mute.
I will read the votes into the record. Can everybody hear me?
I think you're on mute.
I can hear you, Suzanne.
I can hear you, Suzanne.
Mayor Carr, can you hear me?
Yeah, it's an echo, but I can hear you.
Okay. So the first vote is council member Neal has voted for Ms. Labarre. Council member Path has voted for Ms. Labarre. Mayor Carr has voted for Ms. Labarre. Council member Zuluaga has voted for Ms. Labarre. Council member Labarre has voted for herself, and council member Case has voted for herself. So the winner for Mayor Pro Tem would be council member Labarre.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Hillary.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
At this point, as soon as you're ready, Suzanne, I've got a bunch of candidates for various boards that I've contacted in advance, and if you would read those off, Suzanne, we can make a motion to accept or change them, as you will, please.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. The list that I have is for PPACG. The appointment would be to Mayor Carr and Mayor Pro Tem Labarre. Keep Woodland Park Beautiful would be to council member Neal. Utilities Advisory Committee would be to Mayor Pro Tem Labarre, and we would need an alternate. Main Street would be council member Zuluaga. CML Policy Committee would be Mayor Pro Tem Labarre and alternate council member Zuluaga. The Parks and Rec Advisory Board would be council member Case. The Special Investigative Fund would be council member Case. And the Historical Preservation Committee would be Mayor Carr. And the DDA would be council member Zuluaga.
Thank you, Suzanne. Counsel, any discussion or differences there that you are interested in talking about, please?
Mr. Carr, I had expressed an interest in Keep Woodland Park Beautiful as well.
Oh, I only saw two of them. I apologize.
That's okay.
Well, we'll have a vote on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other than the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, any other contradictions to that list?
Not contradictions, but I have a clarification, Mayor. And that is, after the advisory committee, what was the next committee you had?
After that was the Special Investigative Fund. We call it the SIF. And then after that was Historical Preservation Committee, and then the DDA.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hearing no further discussion. Anybody else have a discussion? We've got a raise hand thing that you can do on the chat. If you want to raise your hand, I might be able to see you, please.
Can I just clarify who had, whose name was by Historic Preservation, please?
That's for me. Here's my intention, Counsel, is when the new council person comes on board in about a month, that we might reshuffle this. I fill that spot because I have a history background and history interest, but it's not set in concrete. In a month from now, we might have a couple of places that the new council person can fit in.
I'd like, I'd like to offer, make a comment as well.
Council member Path, please.
I'd like to put my name up as alternate for CML.
All right. So CML has a primary of council member Labarre and an alternate for council member Zuluaga and council member Path. So we'll take a vote there.
No, I'd just like to withdraw my mind on that, Mayor Carr.
Okay, Suzanne, I hope you're keeping track of all this.
I am, sir. So we have for CML Policy Committee, we have Mayor Pro Tem Labarre as the primary, and as the alternate, we have council member Path.
Yes. Any further discussion? We have an alternate opening on the Utilities Advisory Committee. We can leave it open for now, since we have primaries in all the slots. The city attorney weighed in on that earlier and said that was okay to keep that. My proposal is that when we get another council member in a month, that we revisit some of this stuff. But right now, without any other comments, please. Hearing none. We have a Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. We have two candidates. If you each want to, council member Case and council member Zuluaga, if you'd like to give 15 to 30 seconds worth of speech, please go ahead.
Correction, Mayor, it's not me. It's Councilman Neal.
Oh, Neal, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. Council member Neal, do you have any comments?
Well, I would, I am a member of the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Board at this point in time. I was trying to maintain my interaction with that by moving from the member of the board to the liaison of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Case.
I just would like a clarification from staff with regards to Mr. Neal's membership already. Would that not be continued since he's a seated council member now?
It would be better if it were not, so that way he's not acting in both capacities. Not that we have very many issues that come from Keep Woodland Park Beautiful directly to council, but in those instances where he's already potentially voted on an issue, revoting on an issue here. So typically speaking, those would be mutually exclusive, as it were.
Thank you. Then if that's the case, then I will just withdraw my name from now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Absolutely. It just makes sense.
Thank you.
So Suzanne, if you would review, are we, are we, do we have one to one, or do we have any votes to take here?
Read them out loud again.
Would you mind, please?
Not at all. So for PPACG, we have Mayor Carr as the primary, Mayor Pro Tem Labarre as the alternate. For Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, we have council member Neal. For the Utilities Advisory Committee, we have Mayor Pro Tem Hillary Labarre, and we need an alternate, which we'll wait on. For Main Street, we have council member Zuluaga. For the CML Policy Committee, we have Mayor Pro Tem Labarre, and we have council member Path. For the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we have council member Case. For the Special Investigative Fund, we have council member Case. For the Historical Preservation Committee, we have Mayor Carr. And for the DDA, we have council member Zuluaga.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve those en masse, please.
I'll move to approve them then.
Second.
Suzanne? I guess we all vote with the same situation we did before in the chat session?
Or I can just read it out loud if you'd like.
Yes, that would be great.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labarre?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Yeah?
You're muted.
Yeah?
Yes.
Thank you. Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Very good. Thank you, Counsel. We're going to item number four, I believe, and we have no additions, deletions, or corrections to the current agenda. We move on to the consent calendar. We have two items. First item's approved minutes, Suzanne Leclerc. And B is the approved, the March 20th Statement of Expenditures, presenter Emily. Suzanne?
As you said, Mayor Carr, there are two items this evening. We can vote for both items together if it's council's desire. And that is for the minutes from the April 8th, 2020 special council meeting and the approval of the March 2020 Statement of Expenditures. If I can have a motion, that would be great.
Thank you. Counsel, a motion, please.
Can I just?
I'm going to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Can I just make one comment before it goes ahead, Mr. Mayor?
Please, clarification?
Yes, I was on that meeting, although I was not an elected sworn official. I thought the date for the applications for the, filling the last place on council was May the 13th. And I see in the minutes it says the 14th.
So May the 14th is the deadline for, we will be putting out a packet on that day, and so the deadline is on that day, May the 14th.
Thank you.
Is that a correction to the minutes?
No, I have it in the minutes, it's May the 14th.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I can't figure out who said the second.
Second to motion.
Thank you.
Suzanne? Yes?
Case?
Yes.
Labarre?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. On to item seven, unfinished business, none. We have no ordinance on initial posting. We have a QJ, actually, we're, I'm sorry, I missed it. We're in public comments, item six. I want to, I want to make an announcement to any public commentators. Need to spell their names for the media to get your names right. So when you come to the podium, please spell your name, even if it's Smith, please. Thank you very much. Suzanne, do we have any public comment? I obviously don't have a list in front of me.
Suze, you've got both of your computers muted there.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, thank you. My apologies. I have one public comment via email, and that was received from Mr. Coy. And he is asking a question to counsel. Is it possible for the new, for the new council during tonight's meeting to let them know that the DDA is likely to approve a resolution supporting reinstatement of the sales tax vendor fee and elimination of the business license fee at our next meeting? Recognizing that the DDA has no authority whatsoever regarding these items, this resolution will simply state the board's position and ask the city council to consider the items at a future meeting if and when they choose. That's all the comments for that, sir.
So that comment is on record. Thank you. We have nobody coming to the quote-unquote podium?
No, sir.
Thank you. So we'll move on to, public comment is closed for items not on the agenda. We'll move on to unfinished business, none. Ordinances on initial posting, none.
Your Honor, if I might interject just briefly to make sure there's no virtual attendees who had any questions or comments. I don't know if we explained to them. We want to make sure that they have an opportunity to be a part of public comment, if there is any. If you're listening and you have a question, you can feel free to raise your hand, as it were. Via Zoom.
If there's a raise your hand Zoom button.
Mayor Carr, we have one. I'll allow him to talk if you'd like.
Yes, it's, the name label is Six Grandchildren, so please step forward, however that works.
Mayor Carr, they just need to unmute themselves now?
Unmute. Yes. Is it unmuted?
It is, thank you.
Okay. My name is Ann Esch, and I live at 804 Stone Park Lane, apartment 105 in Woodland Park. I would just like to say congratulations to all of you. I was able to tune into Zoom. I've done that with Green Mountain Falls, and I'm on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the PPACG from Green Mountain Falls. And I just thank you all for your service, and I got to watch Mayor Levy too, and that was wonderful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I, may I help you spell your name for the record, please?
Yes, it's A-N-N is my first name. My last name is spelled E-S-C-H. Oh, can I say one more thing? I wanted to, I'm going to write them a letter to thank the police chief and his crew. I take a walk in Woodland Park a lot, and on Far, on Fairview Street, there is an old house that nobody lives in, and I noticed it had tried to be broken into. And I called the police department, and they have attended to that, and the windows are boarded up. And I just think that's wonderful that they took my phone call and they protected that property. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Did you finish spelling your name? Could you spell your last name again for me, please?
Yes, E as in elephant, S as in Sam, C as in Charlie, H as in hello.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised. Going, going once, twice. All right, we'll move on to public hearings. And I will read the following statement into the record. Council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is the common practice of the city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings. Thank you. We have one item on the public hearings to approve. We have one item on the public hearings to approve Peak View Barbecue and Tap Room. Presenter Suzanne Leclair, please.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. This evening, we have an application for a liquor license at Peak View Barbecue and Tap Rooms for a hotel and restaurant liquor license. They are located at 1139 East US Highway 24, that most of you would know as the Old Burger King. Okay? They have submitted their application. Their applicant, the applicant has a current sales tax license and FBI N number. The applicant is eligible to apply for a liquor license. The location is eligible to be licensed. The owner is Jimmy Zoo, Jimmy Zoo, excuse me. Possession of the property is documented by a lease through May 2024. The application was submitted on July 16, 2020. The subject property was posted on April 1st, 2020. The public notice was published on the City of Woodland Park's website. The character of the applicant is not in question for this hearing, and the operation of this business is in compliance with local zoning, building, and fire regulations. All applicable fees have been paid, and a petition proving needs and desires of the neighborhood containing signatures of residents in support of granting this liquor license has been received into the clerk's office. Following the public hearing, the city clerk would like to recommend that this liquor license be approved. With us this evening, we have Jimmy Zoo and also her associate Josh with us this evening, and they can speak about the business to council if council would desire.
Thank you, Suzanne. I see the presenter on the top of my attendee list. If you could come forth and unmute your microphone, we would appreciate if you have some words for us.
If I may say, she hasn't unmuted. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can now, thank you.
How are you?
Very good. You have some words for us in approving your liquor license, please?
Yeah, we just want to have a nice restaurant in Woodland Park.
Very good. Thank you. We need nice restaurants in Woodland Park. We have a bunch now, and we welcome the opportunity to examine your liquor license for such restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you. We will try best that we can.
I see no other public comment. Nobody's raised their hands. With that, I'd entertain a motion, Council.
I'll move to approve the licenses as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Zuluaka?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero. Congratulations.
Thank you. Moving on to new business.
Your Honor, if we could, Suze, can you just verify that there's nobody else that needed from the public to participate?
Thank you, Jason. The council chambers, there is empty, and I do not have any public comments.
Thank you. Sorry, that was a little late on my cue.
Thank you.
That's quite all right. Thank you. It's, not everybody's aware that they raised their hand either, so we need to figure out how to keep telling them that. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. So, we're new business, and we're considering Resolution 861. Presenter, our city attorney, Jason Myers, please.
So, council's aware that previously you were authorized to have these types of meetings via remote, which is what we're doing right now. This resolution, as the COVID crisis has continued now for several weeks, is intended to afford that opportunity to our boards, commissions, and other seating entities that advise council. And so, at this point, rather than try to amend a previous ordinance, we would just ask that council approve this ordinance moving, or resolution moving forward to allow those commissions, committees, and boards to meet remotely and sets up those guidelines. They read pretty much exactly the same as councils, other than with quasi judicial issues, we're asking that applicants affirm that they're okay proceeding electronically, because this is kind of unprecedented. Other than that, it reads exactly the way that the council's authorities currently stand under the current resolution. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Questions, Council? Hearing none. I'll show open the public comment section of the, of this item. Anybody who wishes to speak, please do the raise hand bit of their chat, please. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Partial of the hearing. Any final questions from Council? I encourage a motion for this, please.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 861, providing a policy and procedure for regular patients in meetings for boards, committees, and commissions under the jurisdiction of the City of Woodland Park.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a second from Councilmembers Zuluaka. Suzanne?
Thank you. LeVar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Zuluaka?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to reports. Mayor's report. Got several items here. First of all, I want to, four years ago, I decided to come out of full retirement to start on a path to bring skills and experience. I've had the good fortune to acquire in my business life to troubling situations we've seen for too many years in our beloved Woodland Park. Businesses were failing left and right. Council members seemed to get on the council, and as soon as their personal project was approved, they would leave. Local government was expanding rapidly. It's been obvious to all of us that true citizens with no personal agendas were desperately needed on city council. I'm a problem solver, not a politician. So, my goal has been to work diligently, put efficient city government back into the hands of the people. This is why I decided to run for mayor. On April 7th, 2020, at 8:35 PM, the voters of all ages spoke and gave me the great honor of electing me mayor of Woodland Park. People spoke in a resounding manner to add to our team of city council representatives dedicated to having citizens leading our city to more productive paths, preserving our character, and helping us thrive. I am thankful for the vote of confidence of the people of Woodland Park, and I shall endeavor to lead us to a new level of success our citizens and businesses desire. As promised, I will work full time to achieving the community vision and character you deserve. I would like to read a statement that Paul, Councilmember Sonier, sent me. He says, I would, this is from Paul Sonier. I would first like to congratulate the mayor and new council members for your successful campaign. I would like to thank the people of Woodland Park for the opportunity to have served this community for the past four years. It has been an honor and a privilege to have done so. My prayers that this new council and mayor will have much success in bringing this community together and have a citizen-first agenda. God bless. Paul Sonier. Since council, one announcement I want to make is that council meetings that are virtual during the COVID-19 pandemic will be at 6:00 PM. And after it's over, we will go back to the 7:00 PM meeting time when we begin to meet in person again. So, that's a little announcement we have. So, while we're having these virtual meetings, we will have them at 6:00 PM. I also have thank you notes regarding the Community Investment Fund funding from Welcome Home Warrior, Mountaintop Cycling, CASA, Daybreak, U-Pass Symphony Guild, and the Teller Senior Coalition so far. Thank you very much. We have, coming up soon, next week, we're looking at a work session tentatively scheduled on 4/22. We're looking maybe on 4/23. I'll open it up for discussion with the council on a consensus basis, but I would like to add to that, the first, the first item is a contract discussion on the comp plan, but I would add, like to add a COVID-19 work session in which we talk about things like the ramifications of the CARE Act and all the funding available. Basically, an education session for all of us on council, so we're all on the same page. Talk about opening businesses and our funding freeze and all those types of subjects. I'd like to add that to the work session. And first of all, we currently have it tentatively thrown out there on 4/22 at 1800. I would like to move it to Thursday, the 23rd of April for our work session. I've opened it up for discussion, please. Suzanne?
Other item, Mayor Carr, that I'd like to let you know that we had scheduled for that work session as well was discussion of the policy and procedures with council.
Actually, we delayed that till next meeting, I think, right?
To vote on, but we were going to have a work session around it if council desired.
Okay.
Mayor Carr, this is Sally Riley. If I may just inform the council that we have a public hearing with Planning Commission scheduled for 4/23 next Thursday. So, we would have a conflict.
What time? If we moved it up to five, would that work for you? What time is that meeting, please?
It is at 7:00 PM. So, if you did move it earlier, we could handle the information about the comprehensive plan and then move into the public hearing for Planning Commission.
So, I would, I guess I would propose Thursday at 1700 would be appropriate, and we would move out of the venue if we ran over.
I'm, I can say that I'm available either day, so.
Okay, thank you.
Just a clarification, Mayor Carr. You say move out of the venue, so are we going to meet at council chambers? Not what you were proposing?
Virtual one is.
If we have a conflict with a meeting room, we would, we would try to schedule a meeting room.
Are we really going to meet in person?
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I'm so sorry. Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Carr?
Please.
I will say, we can accommodate both, both meetings. Sally could be at the meeting for the first hour with the consultants, and then the second hour, she can move it. She has her own ability to host the commission meeting on her own, so that she could transition to that, and then the second hour could be, could be focused on a COVID-19 update. I also wanted to, and I'll send this out to city council, I wanted to get any questions or concerns about what I call the city manager's critical information requirements, so that we're all on the same page in terms of what city council would like in terms of notification and communication from staff. I'll send that out tomorrow, but that would be a small, small item on the agenda that I wanted to add, so that city council could express their expectations for communication.
Okay, thank you. Here, so if we move it to Thursday, we could still do 1800. Is that what I hear?
5:00 PM, yes.
1700.
1700. Let's, Suzanne, let's put out a doodle poll and make sure, if you wouldn't mind, maybe tomorrow, and see if Thursday at 5:00 PM works for the rest of council. And the other invitees that we have, that Sally has.
Thank you.
That's all I have on council reports. From the mayor's report, I'm sorry. Have to get used to this. Council reports. Let's see, who's first? I guess new mayor Pro Tem would be Hillary LeVar.
I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Case?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, who's next? Pat, Neil, Councilmember Neil?
I would simply like to thank the 1,400-ish voters that put me into this position. I do want to promise that I'll do everything within my power to represent the citizens exactly as I had said I would to the best of my ability. I'd like to make a promise to all my fellow council members and to the city staff to treat you professionally and with courtesy at all times. And I will work my schedule to make the COVID-19 requirements for meetings my, my number one priority in my life, so we can take care of Woodland Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfaff?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very thankful to the citizens who saw what I shared as my vision for where we could go at Woodland Park and how we, I could help work with them to be able to advance where we've been in our city. We've had many struggles, and I hope to make a positive push to, with the help of this council, to get some things done that will help us move forward, expand our businesses. And as a business owner in Woodland Park, I'm excited about the potential future and opportunity. I would add that my hope as well is, and will work very hard to make sure that we can work closely with the county to enhance our ability to work together, knowing that we have different requirements and different focuses from time to time, but also knowing that our future as a county is, a key component of that is Woodland Park working very well with the county. So, I'll do, be glad to be doing that and have begun to do so. With that, I'm pleased to be able to work with you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very grateful for your election, and I think that you've got a good vision for where we need to go, and I'm looking forward to working with you and the rest of the council as we move forward. Thanks.
Mayor Carr, can I have a go back?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I just would like to comment. I'd like to acknowledge the council that I've worked with for the last two years in the mayor. I hear a lot of things that this council has not done a good job. I have to acknowledge, I was on staff, as everyone knows, for many, many years, and I have to say that this council that I've served with to this point has accomplished a great many things and has done some good work. And I'd like to thank them for, for that and for their diligence in working on our reserves, having the foresight to see the need for debt reduction and to start on a path, it's a start. It may not be perfect, but it's definitely a start. And I just, I just want to acknowledge that we have done a lot of good things. And, and I see this council working together to continue on that path of doing good things for our community. I don't think that there's a single person that has served on this board, you know, over the last two years and before, that didn't have the community's best interests at heart and worked hard to find a path forward. We've made some great strides and great accomplishments. I ran because I was concerned about the fiscal management of this organization, and I think we've turned a corner. It's not perfect, and we still have a lot of work to do. But I'd like to thank all the council members that I've served with and say that you've done a fine job, and you have been looking out for the best interests of our community. And to thank them, and that it was my pleasure to serve. Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I want to pitch in here that the Mayor Levy's deference and humbleness is it was much too much, he, he, much too humble for the accomplishments that were done under his watch, so I recognize what you're, you're saying, and I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Carr.
Oh, councilmember Zuluwaga.
Thank you, Mayor Carr, and congratulations on your election. I, I would like to acknowledge those who have helped me in my bid for election, and I want to begin with my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. It's his guidance and his covering that moved in my heart and moved in the heart of a number of our citizens to come alongside me to take the vision that he put, he birthed in me and to bring it alongside you guys and you gals. And so I'm really excited about the opportunity. Our nation was founded on the laws of nature and nature's God. And we have the extraordinary system of government in these United States, and I hope to carry on those principles and those traditions which many before us have fought and died for. I want to thank my wife. I want to thank all the volunteers for my campaign. And I want to thank Paul Sonier. Paul, you are such a powerful friend. Your courage, your the contribution that you make to our community, and I'm sure you'll continue to. You just inspired me. You inspired me to step up to the plate of, of local government, and I hope I can do as good a job as you've done. Congratulations, Councilman Rusty Neal and Jim Pfaff. And I'm looking forward to working with you, Councilwoman LeBar and Councilwoman Chase. I'm excited.
It's Case, thank you.
Case.
Thank you.
Thank you. I likewise would like to mention my appreciation for councilmember Sonier. We, we had a lot of compatibility and a lot of issues and different styles, but it was wonderful to work with him. Likewise with Noel Sawyer, who is, is not with us tonight, and I appreciate that all that he has done over the past six years. With that, I will turn it over to Jason Myers, our city attorney, for a hidden report he has.
I've got nothing further to add, other than a congratulations to everyone and look forward to working with you moving forward. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Our city manager, Darren Tangeman, reports, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to defer some of my, my report to both the city clerk and the finance director to talk about the outcomes of the election and also to talk about the audit. First thing, I want to, want to congratulate all the new city council, and I look forward to working with all of you. But I really, I want to just make a real quick comment. I know we're going to celebrate all of the outgoing council members in the coming months, but I want to say, you know, I know all four really wanted to, wanted to make what was best, make our community as best, as good as it can. And, and, but one word, I'll just have one word for each one of the outgoing members that kind of embodies how I feel about each one of them. I think councilmember Sawyer, he had an incredible vision for the future of our community. I think Paul Sonier had some incredible humor that he always brought to, to every meeting, and we all had a good, good laugh every time. He was, he was at the, the dais. Dar, his intellect, I really appreciated the challenges that he, he had to the staff and made us work harder for, you know, for, for everything that we, that we brought to city council. And, and then the mayor, his compassion, I've never known anybody to, to love their community more than, than him. So I just want to thank all four of the outgoing council members and the mayor. It's been a pleasure and an honor to work with all four of you. And now I just want to, want to hand it off to Suzanne, and she'll have a, she will provide an update to the city council on the election and the ballot initiatives for the amendments to our charter. Suzanne?
Thank you, Darren. I, like Darren, would also like to say goodbye and thanks to the council that is leaving us this evening. It's been my privilege and pleasure to serve with all of you, and I know I'm going to still see each and every one of you out there in the community. And I'd like to welcome the new council. I'm here to serve at your pleasure, to assist you as needed, and look forward to working together. So thank you. Today, on April sixteenth, we certified the election ballot. We received eighteen additional ballots into the office. So we had a total of two thousand two hundred and fifty ballots. So that was very, very exciting. We had fifty more ballots than last year. Because it was only eighteen ballots, nothing changed. The numbers have changed, and those are reflected on the city website. They went out in a press release today, and I can also email them if you would desire. It just added a couple more votes for some of the council members, a couple more votes for the mayor, some of the, and the mayor candidates. And then all of the amendments have remained the same, with just a few more votes were passed or failed. So no significant change. And the official results are done. We are done with the election. It is certified.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Emily, you're going to provide an update on the, on the, on the audit.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Good. Yes, congratulations to everyone and goodbye to all of the outgoing council members. It was a pleasure to work with all of you and the mayor. So as Suzanne noted, one of the charter amendments that did pass was, was the date of the audit. So July thirty-first is normally when that will be due. That is coincides with the state's deadline for the submission of the audit.
Excuse me, Emily, isn't that June thirtieth?
It's actually July thirty-first. I double-checked that today.
Wow.
Yeah. And so, and this year, in light of COVID nineteen and, you know, coronavirus, it has been extended to September thirtieth. However, we will be way ahead of that schedule. Our goal right now is for May seventh to have the auditors, Hinkle and Company, brief city council at, virtually, of course, at that meeting, which is the first meeting in May. And so that's pretty much my update for the audit. So right now, that is the goal for, for them to brief with the draft audit on May seventh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Mayor, that's, that's all for, for the staff and city manager report.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council on anything? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.